I told you to take four.
You should have taken first.
You should listen. Don't make this. Don't make the same mistake tonight. So. For sure, Mankins is not coming, right? But we think everyone else is. Do we think Bill Anderson is?
Looks like we're kind of the limp noodle side of this. What the hell's going on here?
Which sometimes happens.
Can we have commissioners, please, check in?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, because I could totally see that. So click it real quick so I can see it. Just, just click it real quick right now so I can see it. Yes. Right now it says nine, right? Nine total.
Um, I'd like to call the Butte Silver Bowl Council Commissioners Regular Meeting for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. Could we please have a roll call?
We have 10 present and two absent.
We have 10 present, two absent. Please note that Commissioner Mankins is gone because he has a softball game tonight. And Commissioner Anderson, we haven't heard from, but we knew kind of what was going on with him last week, so. Okay, moving on. Praying the pledge, Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive Fellow Commissioners. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community at Butte Silver Bowl. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr.
Could commissioners please vote? And clerk, could you please record the vote?
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. We don't have any items not addressed on the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to the chief executive's report. I put in front of all the commissioners today a little packet that was presented to me by Chester Carter. And if those of you that don't know Chester Carter, he's been a service worker for us here in the courthouse and through the government buildings. And Chester came to me, asked for a meeting, and I was unsure what that was going to be. But Chester came to me and presented that he wanted to give something back to, to Butte Silver Bowl. And so you see his letter in here, but Chester is quite the poet, and he's been, he's been an honored poet. He's, he was awarded in 1988 and sent down to Orlando for his poems and actually was at a ceremony by Vincent Price and Maya Angelou. And so he's, he's quite the poet, but he wants to present to the Butte Silver Bowl employees the availability to be able to, to do poems presented to, to the employees or to even spouses or whatever. And he wants to do this on his own. I was asking him, was it something they wanted Butte Silver Bowl to finance or do? And he said, no, this is something I want to do and give back to our community. And so, you know, it's heartwarming when you, when you see these things and what, what he is, he's asking to do for, for Butte Silver Bowl. It's really, you know, such a privilege to have employees like that. And he's not only a fantastic employee, he's just a talented man. So I put that in front of you, I'm really not asking any kind of permission from you because I gave him permission to do this. Because it really is nothing out to anybody except for a heartwarming, you know, signed plaque with, with some fantastic poetry in it. So, so with that, I just kind of wanted to talk about Chester. So moving on, as I said a couple of weeks ago, we're having Commissioner Sorge on our allocation, represent the council with allocation agreement with the forthcoming regards with consent decree. We're also forming a repository committee that will include our Department of Reclamation, Environmental Services staff. We'll ask Commissioner Sorge to be part of that because he's already going to be kind of in those talks. We will be asking another commissioner to be part of that and, and a couple of community members, of which I'm reaching out to some of them. So the repository, if you remember, when we had kind of that issue up at Copper Mountain, we want to make sure that we're represented and understand what, where we're going to locate the repository. And, and so we want to make sure we have really robust communication with the, with the citizens and that we have representation so that nobody feels like they've been left out of the process, so when we do that. Yesterday, we had a community meeting on the Montana pole plant with Montana DQ. The only neighborhood person that was there was Ed Fisher. But they, they struggled a little bit with the communication through the, through the internet and stuff. But, you know, they're, they're getting ready to move forward with the project and, and put it out to bid. We, as, as Butte Silver Bowl, we're going to make sure that we, make sure that it's fully complied with, with our, our regulations and, and that before we accept anything. And so working with Eric Hessler and Julia Crane and stuff, we will make sure before we accept anything that we will get a fair and proper cleanup and something that we can accept for the citizens of Butte Silver Bowl. So that's still a lot of things to happen before we do that. The vaccination campaign, Karen Sullivan and Father Beretta are going to work together to really do a robust campaign. And, you know, we're, we're seeing this already where vaccinations are starting to drop off. And so we want people to understand that when you get a COVID vaccine, you're choosing to protect yourself and make a difference for your children and parents and grandparents and other loved ones. But we're seeing a resistance to this. So we're, we are making sure that when we roll out a campaign, that it's something that, you know, that engages the public and encourages them to get the shot. And so most everybody in here probably has been watching the news and see that most of the news publications that are out there kind of are painting a negative picture of, of the vaccine in the very beginning about Johnson and Johnson and different things. And so it doesn't help our efforts to try to encourage people to vaccinate. But we're going to still work forward with that. The art of funding that's coming, we're creating a group representing the Butte Silver Bowl leadership with the council of commissioners. When I said this, I had three commissioners reach out to me right away, so I wasn't excluding anybody. I was just kind of a, first come, first served. So Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner O'Neal reached out first, so I'm putting them on to represent the council as far as that goes. I was on a call with the National League of Cities in Town today. The Treasury has till May 10th to disperse the funds. And that's, cities of over 50,000 will get directory reimbursements, so they'll get their money right away. We are under that threshold, so our money will go through the state. The state will get that money and they have 30 days to disperse it to, to Butte Silver Bowl. And, well, to Butte and Silver Bowl, so we have, you know, both. But there is a provision in there also that they could ask for an extension, the state could ask for an extension. So we don't know exactly when we're going to get the dispersments of funds. So, so that we're kind of waiting and see, the Treasury has not given full guidance. We have some, some, a little bit of understanding what it may be, but we don't have full guidance with that yet. And understand too, we're only getting half this year, half next year. It's not all coming at once. So the, the goal of this committee is going to make sure that we really fully utilize the funding that we get and leverage it against other funding that the state's going to get. If we can turn, you know, $15 million into $45 million for a community, that's what we want to do. So those are the things that we're going to do, we're going to have projects ready to go. And, and, and that committee is going to help us select what is the most important projects that we'll, we'll move forward in the community. So with that, there's lots and lots of things going on locally. Insider Edition is filming in town and doing a report here in town. And I've met with the gentleman that's doing it. I, I think it's going to portray a pretty fair, accurate picture of what's going on. They want to see what reclamation and restoration looks like moving forward. I don't think we're going to see a replica of the Daily Show that happened about 20 some years ago. So, but we've been, we've been working with them to make sure they're getting accurate information. I was up at Montana Resources at six in the morning getting to watch the hazing of the birds activity that they do up there. And they're really impressed of what, how we've reacted to environmental issues within our community. So with that, I'll close out the chief, chief executives' report. And so we will now move on to public comment. Do we have anyone that would like to comment on any items that are on the agenda tonight? You could come forward, state your name and address. Okay. Oh, okay. And do we have a letter?
We do have a letter.
Okay.
The letter is regarding number 21, so communication 2021-194. And it was an email from Michelle DeMaris to Commissioner Shea. Hi, Michelle, I am writing to you in disbelief that the Tommyknockers are trying to put a party deck and 18-person hot tub in, at Three Legion Stadium. This is such a beautiful stadium dedicated to three amazing men. My son Max is so excited to be playing Legion ball and play at such an amazing facility. Parents from other cities are envious of our beautiful stadium. I have been supportive of the Tommyknockers coming to Butte until now. I hope that this city asks them who is going to maintain all of this over the winter, over the winter, what safety features will be implemented around the hot tub? Why are they not worrying about bathrooms and a concession stand under the stadium? And what is their plan for field upkeep since it will have doubled to triple the games and practices? What happens to all of it if they leave Butte? And what are they doing to the stadium's reputation? Butte also has a bad reputation to some people because of all the drinking. Now it is a joke to be, now it is a joke to be able to pay $38 for all you can eat and drink to rent a table on a party deck or sit in a hot tub. What an embarrassment. So people then can drink unlimited in the hot tub or on the party deck and leave the stadium driving down a bad enough road through town or on the highway. Not to mention, this is where our high school-aged boys play. What message is that sending to them? I believe it is sending an awful message to put such emphasis on the alcohol part. This whole thing has gotten to be almost a joke. Please keep these things in mind when meeting on this. Thank you for your time. Melissa DeMaris.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments tonight on items that are on the agenda?
No calls, no other items.
Okay, thank you, seeing none. We'll move on to section one, bid openings, public hearings, and our presentations. We have a public hearing, we have three public hearings actually that we'll go forward. So we'll go first, public hearing, communication number 2021-150. Brian Doherty, Fire Chief, requesting council commissioners permission to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021 for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2021 Fire Department budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. So County Attorney Joyce, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publication for all three public hearings, and all three appear to be in order.
Thank you. And I'll go through the other two after we go through this. So do we have Fire Chief Doherty available to speak to this?
Chief Executive Gallagher, Members of the Council, County Attorney Joyce, my name is Brian Doherty.
On the button, there you go. Just, just push the button right on there, it'll turn red on you. There you go. Is that better?
Yep.
Nothing like putting the new guy on the spot, huh?
I'm requesting the public hearing this evening for the purposes of amending the fiscal year 2020-21 Fire Department budget to allow for increased expenditures of anticipated revenues. The proposed amendment is related to revenue that was generated by the Fire Department from DNRC wildland severity deployments here in Montana as well as emergent management assistant compacts in California. The amount of the unanticipated revenue is $269,063.32. The revenue that was unanticipated is intended to be reimbursed, the wages and benefits of the members that participated in these deployments, as well as to make capital, future capital equipment purchases to benefit the members of our community. Thank you for your consideration on this very important request.
Helps if I do it. Thank you, Chief Doherty.
Thank you.
Commissioners, have any questions? Seeing none. We'll open the public hearing. I'll call for proponents of, you can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll call for any proponents of the, of the public hearing, any proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, we'll move on to opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for any opponents. Third and final call for opponents. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, moving on to communication number 2021-164. Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting council commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on April 21st for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2021 code enforcement budget. Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Members of the Council, for the record, I'm Lori Casey, Planning Director. Tonight, I'm asking for a public hearing to move funds out of our reserves of the building code budget for a building inspector position and the related expenses as a computer and desk and that. Over the past few years, we have streamlined our office. We have done different things, new software, changed some position descriptions. But what we have found that we, we're at the point where we need additional staff. Our building permits are up 47% since 2017, and our valuation increase on the permits is up 64%. We have an obligation under the state of Montana to complete building permit reviews on residential properties within 10 working days. We're starting to push that because we, our building official is out primarily doing inspections now. We do have a plan reviewer, but we're starting to run short. The building code department is entirely funded from the permits. We can by law keep one year of reserves. We are at almost $500,000 in reserves, so we're over our, what we can keep. By state law, in order to get that back down, we would be lowering our fees. We haven't lowered our fees, or we haven't raised our fees since the 1980s. So, and, and looking at the numbers, the valuation and what we are doing, we believe that it is time to add additional staff. So we're asking to move those extra reserves into our budget so that we can hire a building inspector and have them hopefully on staff for our summer months when it's the most busiest. And with that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Casey. Do commissioners have any questions of Lori? Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Lori, just a quick question, that building or the code, building inspector, would that be qualified for electrical everything? Or just what, what will that person be doing or what would Powers be, if you will? Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neal, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neal, it would be, they would be able to inspect, once they're certified, everything but electrical. We, if you recall, when we couldn't hire and find staff to, for the electrical inspection position, we voluntarily decertified and gave those inspections back to the state. So those are under the state of the Montana, but building, plumbing, mechanical, once they're certi, fully certified, they would do all of those inspections.
Thank you, Director Casey. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, Chief Executive. Lori, then are you going to budget in the fiscal year 2223 for this position also then? Is that your thought?
Commissioner Sorge, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, yes. We, as our permits have been increasing, our values increasing, we believe that we'll have plenty of, of funding within our permits for this position.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Fortune.
I have two questions, kind of with him, but what are the hiring qualifications, I guess?
Commissioner Fortune, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fortune, by state law, they have to go through a certification program. So they become certified under the International Building Code. That's usually through testing and some coursework that they do.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow up?
My next question, do you think it'll expedite the permit process?
Commissioner Fortune, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fortune, yes, I do. We now only really, we only have one, our building official's the only person that is certified to do inspections. So it will help with that, definitely. And they will also, once they're certified, be able to do plan reviews. So we can spread the workload out a little better.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions of commissioners? Commissioner Reardon.
Lori, I was just wondering, you know, you said you had the reserves of $500,000 for, in your department, correct? And I was wondering what the increase in the influx of activities in Butte, why we can't make this a permanent job? Because obviously the influx of people isn't going to stop and also the demand for permits.
Commissioner Reardon, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Reardon, we are intending to make this a permanent position. We're asking to move the reserves now so that we could do the hiring and have them on during our construction season this summer. And then the intent would be, because we would have the funding available to keep it on as a full-time position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions of commissioners? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. I'll call for proponents, any proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, I'll call for any opponents. Second call for any opponents. Third and final call for opponents. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Moving on to communication number 2021-168. Eric Hessler requesting council commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on April 21st for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2021 ARCO Source area and stormwater budget. Do we have Director Hessler here?
Mr. Chief Executive, Members of Council, I have made this request to amend this fiscal year's budget to cover the costs, unforeseen costs of some vehicular and equipment damages and just failures, to be quite honest, that are necessary to perform the O and M tasks for the stormwater and O and M programs. These funds would come from the stormwater and O and M trust that's provided to Butte Silver Bowl through the allocation agreement with Atlantic Richfield. Also, these funds would allow for us to purchase some additional soils to keep the program afloat in regards to all the repair work as well. We had made the, you had seen the proposal for that, and that purchase has been made. But the R map was covering the vast majority of it where these materials are utilized for O and M as well. So that is the reason for the request. If you have any questions, I'll gladly answer.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Eric, for that. Just, just for everyone's edification, so the Source area and stormwater budget is separate from the county budget. I mean, we have to approve it, but it's part of the, the super fund aspect of the budgeting, is that correct?
Commissioner Shaw, Members of the Council? That is correct. It is separate from the general fund in Butte Silver Bowl funding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Eric, about three or four months ago, we approved $70,000 for soil. Is this another batch of soil or is this paying for the last one?
This is the, paying for the last amount of soil to be delivered.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Follow up, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So I guess my question is, is didn't we already approve the $70,000 for soil one time before?
Commissioner Fisher, the first $70,000 was for, in addition, on the R map side of things, on the R map budgets. And we had the money within the stormwater O and M accounts, if you will, or for this year's budget. But due to the, some of the damage to, I wouldn't say damage, just flat failure of equipment and some vehicles, we have had to ask for additional funding to come from the trust to cover the costs of those repairs and the remaining portion of the soil.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Follow up, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I guess, I guess the question I'm answering is, did we receive $70,000 with the topsoil, like from California or somewhere far away? Or did we not?
Commissioner Fisher, that is correct. That the total purchase was for $147,000 worth of soil, $70,000 of it to be covered by the Residential Metals Program, that budget, and the other was to be covered by the stormwater O and M budgets. But due to the unforeseen costs with repairs, we had to ask for additional funds to cover the soil and the repair work.
Thank you, Director, Director Hessler.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher.
Any other questions of commissioners? Commissioner Reardon.
Executive. I, I just have a question for you, Eric. It's basically you're coming and saying, you know, we had faders on this and all that. Are we looking at large amounts of money for, I mean, are we looking at a skid skier compared to a backhoe? Or do these things need maintenance or repair? You know, that's kind of pretty vague, if you would just fill us in on that. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Reardon, it is mainly a lot of repairs to existing equipment. It's no purchase of new equipment, but we had the hydraulic system completely fail in a mini excavator along with the three-point harness, the bucket clasp. It, it, they're, they're well-used, let's put it that way. And then the skidster also had some issues. We lost a diesel engine in one of our dump trucks, so there had been some extenuating costs in regards to repairs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Refresh me now, I've been away for a little while. Wasn't it about three years ago we leased this equipment and then we're going to buy it at the end of the option? Is this the same equipment that we're still leasing or did we buy this equipment?
Commissioner Fisher, this is the same equipment that we leased, but we have since purchased. About three years ago, we purchased this equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hessler. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Calling for opponents, first call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. Seeing none, I'll move on to, I went opponents first, didn't I? I'll go to proponents. I like going out of order. I'll call first, first, first call for proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, moving on to Section Two Consent Agenda. Communication Reports A 1 through 4, Communications B 1 through 30. Do we have any friendly amendments or segregations? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate Communication Number 21, 2021-194.
Segregating Communication Number 21, or 2021-194. I should put on my glasses. All right, any other segregations? Commissioner Thatcher.
Um, I don't know really how this works yet, so I would like to segregate just Communication Number One, just as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay.
And you can make that friendly amendment now.
Right now? Okay. I just, isn't it supposed to be Country Club Lane instead of County Club Lane?
Yes.
Good catch.
Hey, nice catch. So friendly amendment, just to make a clerical correction on that. Spelling correction. Any other segregations? Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you Chief Executive Gallagher. I would like to segregate Communication, or Number 23, Communication Number 2021-196.
Communication Number 23, 2021-196. Any other segregations? Seeing none. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve Section Two Consent Agenda, A 1 through 4 and B 1 through 30, with the exception of Item 21, 2021-194, and Item 23, 2021-196.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda excluding Communication Number 21 and Communication Number 23. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to first segregated item, Communication Number 21, or, no, Communication Number 2021-194. Dwayne Wagner, General Manager, Owner of Mining City Tommyknockers Baseball Club LLC, requesting Council Commissioners authorization for construction and minor additions to Three Legends Stadium for the 2021 season. We are not asking, or we're not seeking or asking for any funding considerations for this project. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you Chief Executive Gallagher. Definitely wanted to have a conversation about this. Lot of feedback today from, you know, many people around Butte, Montana about, they're just, their concerns of this particular enhancement of the field, if you will. Definitely big fan, support the Tommyknockers, all for it. I just, this one to me, doesn't make much sense. It's, we're between bathrooms, concession stands, I feel like we're, need to start from the, maybe bathrooms would be a lot more important at this point, and a concession stand prior to having this party deck where it is. Excuse me, not where it is, just to, to start with that, in my opinion. Also, the, just the, where I struggle with it is, you know, you're going to buy a ticket, walk all the way around the field to go out there. I just, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I, I think it should be, the money should be put elsewhere. Not, not that I'm trying to tell anyone how to spend their money, but the, my belief on this field, it's, it's a Legion baseball field. We're allowing the Tommyknockers to come in, which is absolutely great, support at 100%. But the ma- the main goal of that field is for Legion baseball, period. It was, that's why it was built, hence the name. Could go on for hours about that. I guess I would just love the conversation with you guys on that, because I, I just, I don't know, I don't, I don't feel it, I don't. Other thing that makes me wonder too, even on building this, like what permits they have to get, you're, you know, it's a, you can't just go drill holes and throw her up, I don't, I don't think anyway, I don't, don't have my engineering degree or construction degree either, so I, I don't know, I'm, I'm definitely struggling with this one.
The question's out there.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you Commissioner O'Neil. I, I'll touch base just a little bit on this. One of the statements that you made there was that this, this baseball field was constructed for the, for American Legion baseball. That, that is, has a lot of truth to it, but also, there was a donation, $1 million from the Denison Wells, Phyllis Washington Foundation, that the goal of that donation was to provide a facility for the American Legion baseball program to have to play baseball at, but, as well as to provide a stadium that could possibly bring in a minor league baseball team with that donation. That was part of that allocation that came there. So it wasn't strictly, this is, it's an amenity for Butte Silver Bow, for the community, for the citizens as well. So that was part of the, the, the money that was donated from, from the Denison Phyllis Washington Foundation. Now, all that money itself did not cover the costs of the building of Miners, of Miners' Field and, and Three Legends Stadium. Butte Silver Bow had a contributing factor with that, mostly with in-kind work and, and through public works, through Metro, through Parks Department, many other ways that we did that. But Dane Wagner is in the audience today, and Dane is our General Manager for the Tommyknockers. I'd like him to come forward and, and talk a little bit about what, what the request is, and he can answer some questions for the Commissioners here. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, how, how are we doing Council? It's good to be here, and obviously, it's an incredible honor and privilege to be able to bring this to the Butte Silver Bow community. You know, so I think, I think one of the questions is what concessions in bathrooms? You know, so when we put a price tag on what concessions in bathrooms look like, that's, that's part of Phase Two of construction, quarter of a million dollars. You know, so we, we've worked hard with the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for different grants and different ways to fund that construction. But, you know, 60, 40 to $60,000 isn't going to cut it. It's not going to get it done. And so, you know, kind of one of the things that I expressed to the Legion baseball program today was, what we care about is the fan experience. And so, by building a, by building a splash zone or a hot tub, it, it's actually not profitable at all for the Tommyknockers. So the cost of a hot tub is $16,000 to build the structure to hold a hot tub, you know, roughly, with exclusion to the party deck, roughly $10,000. It's, it costs $26,000 to build a splash zone hot tub. If we, there's no way to be profitable for 10 years by selling tickets to the splash zone. 12 to 18 people will buy tickets per game to that section, times 32 games. By the, by the time you reach profitability on your expense for building a splash zone and hot tub, or hot tub and the structure to hold it, it's five, six, seven, eight years. And so, the, the motivation for us building a splash zone isn't for profits, it's for the people. It's for the fan experience at Three Legends Stadium. It's for the people of Butte, the families, it's for, you know, the prestige for Butte, Montana and Butte Silver Bow to hold their head up high and say that the Mining City Tommyknockers are our baseball team. You know, so we would be the fourth baseball organization in all of baseball to have a water element at our ballpark. That's the vision behind the, you know, building these minor additions and construction upgrades. You know, so it's, it's about bringing something really special to Butte. And, and so I wanted to highlight that, and then ans- answer any questions, but, you know, there certainly is no benefit for us on a, on a profit or fiscal base. Really, we're doing this out of the kindness of our heart and out of a long-term, decades upon decades, long-term vision for what the Mining City Tommyknockers can mean for Butte Silver Bow, for the people of Butte, and, and as a baseball organization to be, you know, premier, top-level, one of the best baseball organizations in all of baseball. So, you know, so any, any questions?
Thank you Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Thatcher first, and then Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you Chief Executive Gallagher. So just a few of the complaints that, that obviously we heard and that I have received emails about is field maintenance. So obviously, the field is going to be used at least twice of what it's used to being used. So what are your plan, first question is, what are your plans as far as field maintenance to upkeep that and make sure that everybody continues to be able to use the field? And second is, you know, if you don't have a plan for field maintenance, I guess we won't be able to play games there, so then you're not selling tickets anyway, so what's the point of having this pool regardless?
Absolutely.
So that's just my questions, thank you.
That's a very good question, thank you. Hold on. Commissioner Thatcher, Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Thank you Commissioner Thatcher. You know, we do have a plan for field maintenance. And, and basically, you know, more games will be played at Three Legends Stadium on that field, and double the field maintenance will be performed. So, you know, a discussion that we've had with the Legion baseball program is, you know, typically, in a, in an annual basis, I think they've spent about $5,000 on field maintenance. They'll, they will not incur any additional charges or costs. If anything, they may incur less costs. Because we, you know, it's in our best interest and in the city's best interest and the peo- you know, the community's best interest for us to have a really great playing field. You know, part of the baseball experience when you walk into a stadium is an immaculate baseball field that looks incredible. That's, that's part of the experience. And so, you know, we, we, we would be fools not to put a lot of money into our field conditions and then not be able to sell tickets to, to our games.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for being here. I'm excited for this baseball to start, and I can remember the old Copper King days years ago, and it was great. It was a lot of fun for the family, it was a lot of fun, you know, just to get people out. But again, I think we, we have to ask some questions to be doing our job to make sure it's being done right.
Yes.
You know, so one of the questions I'm asking is, you know, what about inspection of the hot tub? You know, what about, like, the health conditions? What about, you know, how are you going to keep it clean and all that, that kind of good stuff?
Commissioner Sorge, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you Commissioner Sorge. So in, in regards to that, I, I addressed it kind of in the, in the presentation or package that I gave to, to be on the agenda to, to Barb. You know, part of our agreement with Mountain Hot Tub, who would be, who would be who we're going with for, for this particular section, in, in our agreement with them is water treatment services. They also are, you know, going to do winterization. So I know that that was one of the questions, what happens after the season is done? You know, we, so we have a plan in place to winterize the hot tub, and, and then, you know, definitely water treatment, sanitation, you know, cleanliness, the highest standard for making sure that we provide a safe and enjoyable experience for fans.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you Chief Executive Gallagher. Thank you, sir, for being here, I appreciate it. I'm all for the deck. I can't go the hot tubs.
Yeah.
The thing is, is, hot tubs, even in hotels, got to be inspected by the Butte Silver Bow Health Department, whether hot spas or whoever's doing it for you. And when you add alcohol and hot tubs, you add a, you add a couple more issues that are liabilities more than they are. But I'm all for the party deck, but I just can't do the hot tub thing. If you want to revise it or something, if not, I'm getting close to reckon, making a recommendation that move a motion to deny your request, but with some support, I would hold it in abeyance and try to see if we could negotiate middle ground in this, but I just can't do the hot tubs at a, at a family-owned thing out there, because I know when people drink and, you know, and they go to use the urinals and stuff like that, and women get a little drunk and get a little loose, and I've been to a few parties in my life, so I can, I can go, I can go along with the deck, but I can't do the hot tubs, so I would either make a recommendation.
Commissioner Fisher. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Fisher.
Thatcher.
Fisher.
Fisher.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, thank you, yeah. Hey, I get your concerns 100%. You know, for, for me, the, the reason, so like I had said, the hot tub is not profitable. There, there's no fiscal reason for the Tommyknockers to do this. The reason that it's paramount for us to have the hot tub is, we'd be the fourth baseball organization in all of baseball, from the New York Yankees down to the minor leagues, to have a water element in our, in our ballpark. It says something about who Butte Silver Bow is and who the Tommyknockers are. It, it's, there's something, there's, I'm married to the idea of the hot tub for that single reason, is the fans. It's all about the people for me. And so, number one on our list is never profits, it's fan experience. You know, my, my job title might be General Manager, but more accurately, it's customer service representative. And so I believe that the hot tub is a, is, is paramount to the fan experience, I really do. So, you know, as far as having it be inspected, absolutely, let's get it inspected after every game. Let's make sure the water treatment is the highest level water treatment and that it's the safest environment for people. I think there's a little bit too much stress being put on the alcohol, you know, so we, we had, we had a letter, you know, about that. You know, this is, that's just what's included with the ticket. People will have a beer or two and enjoy the game, it kind of part of, part of the experience of baseball. But we certainly, you know, just like a restaurant or a bar, we can't over-serve our customers either. And so we'll be vigilant, and, and we have a game plan in place and policies in place where people won't be able to over-drink. That's part of our obligation to be an establishment or an organization, to serve responsibly. So while it says all you can eat, all you can drink, it cuts off at the bottom of the sixth. You know, we can't over-serve our customers and we would never do that. And so I think, you know, I think maybe a little bit too much is being said about the alcohol component with the hot tub. In my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and thank you, Mr. Wagner, for being here. I, I don't think you can say too much about the alcohol, to be honest. I mean, I, I don't agree on that. Also, I, I come from a legal background, I worry about liability. I know with hot tubs, honestly, I was in hot tub business in the 70s, and I can guarantee you, it was big then, but then when people started fainting, and, I mean, not only that, but slipping, you get people drinking, you've got liability issues, and it is a public park, which I believe the onus would be, I could ask our county attorney, but the onus would be on the county, where the, where the deep pockets hang on. And so, I, I think when we first approved this, which is awesome, I love the Copper Kings, I just so happy to have this team coming in, that was never said in the original presentation to us, that, oh yeah, by the way, we're going to be adding these features, and by the way, we're going to be adding a hot tub, which, you know, to me, is another layer of liability. So I, I'm going to have to, for once, agree with Commissioner Fisher. And I would be all for everything except the hot tub. And, you know, you can say anything you want about liability or about serving people, but go to a ballgame, I mean, seriously, you'd have to have a one-on-one practically. So if we can mitigate the liability and the issues after a game, driving, you know, and anything like that, I, I, we are a family-oriented place, and our, and our parks are as well. So that would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Wagner, thank you so much for being here, I really appreciate your time. I do have a couple of questions, so I'll have some follow-ups. Under whose license is the alcohol being provided?
Commissioner Shay, Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, so, so we have a, we have a special beer and wine permit that it goes from March 1st through Oc- October 31st. Ed Lester, the sheriff, you know, gave us our endorsement, and, and so we hold a special beer- And, uh, and so we hold a special beer and wine permit. And then, and then just to address Commissioner Shaw, we, uh, part of our agreement with Bu- Butte Silver Bow and, and Chief Executive can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, so we hold a one million dollar, uh, insurance policy. And then, uh, and I believe there's, uh, s- seven hundred and fifty thousand per occurrence. And, uh, and the Mining City Tommyknockers hold that insurance policy. And then it names Butte Silver Bow as.
Additionally insured.
Additionally insured.
Yeah, and it would be, it would follow state law, one point five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand per occurrence.
That's right. Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Shay had a follow-up, and then I'll go to Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. So I've taken some feedback on this today, and it's not been favorable for the Tommyknockers. Um, while people are in favor of the Tommyknockers, and I am as well, I love the idea of having baseball. I did not grow up here, but I traveled here to watch the Copper Kings play. So the idea of me being able to go and sit and watch baseball in the summer in Butte makes me really, really happy.
Yeah.
Um, it is a wholesome method of entertainment. I think it's great that the players, that the organization is going to mentor our younger players. Um, which is where I kind of struggle with, with this, the way this was rolled out in the newspaper. It's free for all, all you can eat, all you can drink, hot tub is going to be great. I am concerned about the message that, that that sends to our youth, for sure. Um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with any of the tragedies that have occurred in Butte in the last fifteen years related to alcohol and underage alcohol use. Um, that's another conversation. But my question is, is this the best foot forward that the Tommyknockers can have in their first season? I don't think it is. I don't think it's out of the realm in the future, but I just don't think it's the best foot forward in the moment. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Shay. Um, Mr. Wagner, would you like to respond?
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, so, so yeah, I mean, we certainly can't serve to underage kids. And, and I'm, I'm really not even, you know, a huge, you know, fan of, of alcohol to begin with as well. So, um, you know, I know it's part of baseball and it's part of the experience, and for some people, it's really important to have a beer at a baseball game. But I think much more important than that is, um, you know, I, I think what, what our vision is for the next twenty or thirty or forty years is to continually add to the city-owned asset, city-county-owned asset. And so, you know, this is, this is really kind of our first, um, you know, idea for what we want to do to Three Legend Stadium, but we want to do something every single year, year after year. And so, um, you know, um, definitely regarding the newspaper article, I, you know, was just as shocked as everybody else to see a newspaper article. You know, we, we have a close relationship with Jeff Welsh and Mike Smith and those guys over at the Montana Standard and the Sports Department. And, uh, and, you know, so, so when they saw it on the agenda, they had a couple of questions, and that was about as far, far as I thought, you know, uh, as far as the newspaper articles. So, you know, w- we certainly aren't endorsing underage drinking. I can promise you that. And so, you know, what, what, wh- what the vision is for the Tommyknockers and Butte Silver Bow and Three Legend Stadium is to take a two-point-three million dollar stadium and turn it into a five million dollar asset for Butte Silver Bow. And so, you know, um, you know, that's certainly, certainly, uh, I think a, a good concern is, and, and I don't know where the alcohol part of it, kind of, the context of that became kind of a really big part of the splash zone, but it's, uh, you know, it, it would be reserved by a group, so that's the first thing. You know, my general feeling for who those groups would be would be corporate outings. You know, nine times out of ten, you're gonna, you're gonna act accordingly when you're with your coworkers at a, at a company outing or an appreciation, an employee appreciation outing, you know, the other groups. Nobody can buy an individual ticket to the splash zone. It's reserved in groups. So twelve or to eighteen people reserve it. You know, I couldn't walk up and buy one ticket to it and then join thirteen other people on the, the splash zone. So, you know, I think when you, when you put it in the context of families are renting it out, corporate outings are renting it out, you know, I think it's going to be a really controlled and good environment. And I don't think that the alcohol play, will play into it as, as much as I guess people think.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, uh, Mr. Wagner, I just wanted to even pu- put on record that in, in regards to the liquor license or your, the beer or wine license you have from your time, that it's, it's not, I don't know how that works, but Sheriff Lester doesn't like give you that. No myth, okay, so, the, for the record, if anybody's aware, that's not how that works. I mean, I just want that to be not confusing on that. You mentioned that Sher- I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I don't want anybody to hear that, that Sheriff Lester like endorsed you for the liquor license. That's just not, that's not how that works. So I wanted to just make that clear.
Yeah.
Whether, so we all understand that. Thank you.
We, we have Sheriff Lester. Maybe he could speak to, to.
Yeah, I mean, what I wanted to explain is we got it through the Montana Department of Revenue. And then the sheriff, um, you know, g- signs a form saying that the law enforcement agency has, has agreed to us having a special beer and wine permit. So I didn't, sorry, I di- I didn't mean to missay anything or, um, or not provide enough information on how that process works. We went through the Montana Department of Revenue, the alcohol and tobacco, and part of our application was that local law enforcement be made aware of our request for a special beer and wine permit and that they sign off and say, okay, w- you know, w- we're aware that they are applying for this.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Can we have Sheriff Lester just come up and kind of speak to that?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, for the record, I'm Sheriff Ed Lester. Um, so there is some confusion about the permit that I signed for the Tommyknockers. The permit i- that I signed for the Tommyknockers is based on basically the same permit that's for Legion Baseball. What that is, is the Department of Revenue is aware of the fact that the Tommyknockers are selling alcohol at the game, and it's been approved by law enforcement that it's okay. But the license itself has to be through a licensed liquor seller. For example, the American Legion has a liquor license. And this Legion has pretty much the same agreement through, uh, same, same waiver or same, uh, forms signed by me indicating that I'm aware that there are alcohol sales and their, their plan is approved, but it still has to have a licensed seller attached to it. And so, for example, the Legion again has the American Legion Bar, which is in their hall. That's the liquor license that's associated with that permit.
Thank you, Sheriff Lester. Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Thatcher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, so I just wanted to go back to what Michelle was saying. You know, you talk about your, can I take this off?
Yes.
You talk about your, um, your one point five million dollar insurance policy, and I get that that's all necessary, you know, but for me, my little sister lives up the road, so in you, in, in my position, you couldn't put a price on her life, and, and you won't, and, and similar to everybody in this room, you won't put a price on any of their kids' lives, any of their family members' lives. And so with that, I struggle, um, that you, that you revert back to saying, oh, well, alcohol isn't that big of a deal. Well, frankly, in Butte, Montana, when people have beers, they have beers. And, and I'm just as guilty as loving beer myself, so I, I think that you're making it a lesser deal than, than what it is because you haven't experienced it to the full extent. So, yeah, I'd love to go to a baseball game and have five beers, whatever, and enjoy myself, yes. Um, but not at the extent or at the expense of other people's lives. And I get it that you probably have stuff in mind for that as well as Sheriff Lester and all of that. Um, but I just don't think, I think adding the hot tub to it just accentuates the whole situation tenfold. And so that would not be a risk that I would be willing to take with my little sister living right up the road, so that is all I have on that matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Thatcher. Any other commissioners have any? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Chief Executive. You know, there is, there is a concern about alcohol, but I'm not sure we're reinventing the wheel here. You know, I know at some of the other bigger stadiums, they have security, that people going around. Are you going to have any kind of people looking for problems or security people or anything to that extent to, to keep people in check and to keep people that are inebriated or whatever? Are you going to be doing anything like that?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, we have, uh, forty game day staff, and so some, um, you know, of course, we'll have, uh, dedicated members that will be dealing with the security.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, for indulging me for one last question. Is there a shuttle service available for people who are not able to drive home?
Commissioner Shay and Mr. Wagner.
You know, I think that's definitely something that we could, you know, uh, discuss. If, if people, if our council here feels that there, you know, is, uh, is a need for that, you know? Obviously, when, when someone goes to a bar, you know, there, there, there's some sort of level of, you know, trust that, that they can make a decision whether they're able to drive or not. Um, you know, so, I mean, I, I know that obviously if we're selling some beer at a game, you know, we, we can't, we don't want to over-serve our clientele, but just, just like, uh, any restaurant or, or bar, you know, some of, some of the responsibility does rest on the consumer, I, I believe. You know, they, they make a decision to get in their car or, or not get in their car.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Fortune.
I, I have, I have two questions, I guess. Uh, most of our complaints came from the youth baseball associations. Have you coordinated with them much, or? Cause it, I guess that's the first question.
Commissioner Fortune and Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, yeah, so I had a meeting today at twelve o'clock with, uh, with the Legion program. And, um, you know, absolutely, we, we discussed some of their concerns for a party deck. From my understanding, uh, you know, you know, as, as a baseball team and whatnot, they, they see where, you know, some money could be put into field conditions. They see, you know, where, where, you know, that, that would be what they would do with their funds. But, you know, the, these aren't county or, or city funds that are being debated on where they're to be allocated to. These are our funds, and this is where we see having the biggest impact on the fan experience. And so, you know, um, you know, I think they, they voiced some of their concerns, but overall, I think when we walked away from the meeting, they, they thought they could see the benefit and they definitely could see how it could really enhance the fan experience.
Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Fortune.
Uh, I guess just for the record, that's not kind of the indication we got. But, uh, going into my next question, have you like talked to the health department? I just, I'm, I'm familiar with hot tubs at our gym, and we can't even have a hot tub open during COVID. So I guess my question is, if you've talked to them, are they approving that? And with, uh, someone brought up testing, but you have to test it every day for pH levels.
Oh, of course.
Do you have someone that's going to do that?
Commissioner Fortune and Mr. Wagner.
Yep, we, you know, Mountain Hot Tub would be the people that would treat the water after every game. And, uh, and our first process before going to the health department was to get the permission from the Parks and Recreation Department to build these upgrades to Three Legend Stadium, and we had a unanimous approval, uh, in our favor for, for these upgrades. And then our second step was to go to the county commis- you know, commissioners.
Um, I, I'd like to follow up a question here. Um, at the Parks and Rec, um, meeting, there was talk that the, the hot tub wasn't actually, the deck wasn't going to be built this year. Now, has that changed?
It di- that did change, actually. That did change. Yeah, so, I mean, they approved us building a hot tub and a party deck. Um, but wh- when I presented to the Parks and Recreation Department, we hadn't really got all our ducks in a row as far as who would do the construction, and we didn't know if we would be able to do it in time for the 2021 season. That's absolutely true.
Okay, um, Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, Mr. Wagner, I appreciate your vision, and I appreciate your, your kind of looking down the road. I'm, I'm not quite in a grants that the hot tub will be used by corporate folks. You know, I just don't s- I'm, I'm, in my mind, I'm envisioning this more as young folks. You know, probably, you know, I'm seeing college-age kids getting together and renting this. I'm seeing it not quite, uh, the, maybe that's the, um, statement we want to make. Um, I'm not against the, the party deck. I think I would probably support the party deck. I could support. But at this time, I'm not sure I can support the hot tub at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Commissioner Thatcher.
Um, just, just, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Uh, just as far as getting your ducks in a row, I mean, you said you had them out. I would just say, my first duck in a row would probably be the shuttle service, um, that Commissioner Shay has recommended because I think that that would alleviate a lot of stress, um, as far as so many people's concerns, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thatcher. Commissioner Fisher, and then Commissioner Reardon.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Mr. Wagner, as you can see, it's one of these issues we're kicking around down here. One of my favorite sayings is, I don't like kicking things down the road. But in this case, that park, I think, actually lies in Commissioner Mankin's area, somewhere between his and Commissioner Thatcher's. And Mr. Mankin's isn't here tonight, so, you know, I would like to make a motion to hold it in abeyance because I think if we were to vote on it tonight and go with the recommendation to concur on file, I think we'd kill this. And I ain't sure we want to kill it without having an opportunity to maybe negotiate something in the middle ground because the art of politics is negotiation. And when you don't come to agreement after negotiation, do the right thing. As you can hear right now, most of the field right thing is not your proposal. So I'm going to leave that open for a few of these people to talk, and I will make a motion here after that. Thank you.
Commissioner Reardon.
Mr. Wagner, uh, I appreciate you, like everybody else in this room, for your investment and your interest in Butte. And I've been sitting here and all that stuff, and I have to agree. I mean, when you go to the ballpark, I'm a baseball fan. I travel in Missoula. It's now the paddleheads to watch the game. There's no hot tub there. You know, it's, uh, yes, there's alcohol being served there. It's a family scenario. It comes in to, mom and dad got their kids. There's some, uh, young people there and all that. It's a pretty controlled environment. And I have to agree with everybody that there's no angels up here on this commission at all. But we have some, uh, some problems here, and I think the biggest problem is this hot tub. And, uh, when you go to a baseball game or you're sitting at home watching a baseball game on TV, you're not out mowing the lawn or being preoccupied with something else. I get the deck and everything with the corporate, uh, responsibility and the corporate people. That's a great idea, maybe a, a selective seating deal and having a bar there and all that. But, uh, I have to be in agreement, I think this hot tub would cause nothing but problems and do the wrong thing. I'm not questioning you. You've obviously been to these larger parks. And I mean, you might see one hot tub. I think the Angels have a hot tub or something like that. I don't see twenty thousand people in there. You know what I mean? There's a few, there's a few select people in this hot tub, so I think that, uh, I don't know how long you've been around Butte, Montana and all that. We really, really, and I think you're going to be supported really, really well, is the fact with this hot tub, uh, I think you're barking up the wrong tree right out of the gate, you know? I think that every commissioner would be in agreement to, to this deck and suffice with corporate response. Hell, maybe even the commissioners might get, get a, a deal going with you guys or something like that, you know, to go have some fun. Yeah, yeah, but we won't drive and all that. And, and I have to agree, I don't mean to get carried away, but we, I have to agree with you on somewhat.
Yeah.
You know, if people drink most of the time and all that, they have to be responsible for themselves. You know, you have a, a job that you can't serve and all that. But, you know, people realize that if you have youngsters with you or even, but there's no reason in Butte Silver Bow to get a DUI. If you get a DUI in Butte Silver Bow, you don't have very good sense. You can get rides home. They got coupons. They got this, they got that.
Yeah.
But this hot tub deal, I, uh, I'm sorry, but I mean, you know, and I think Mr. Fisher, Commissioner Fisher, has the right idea. Is this going to break the deal? Are you going to leave town if we can't have a hot tub? I guess that's my final question to you.
That, that answer that. Commissioner Reardon and, uh, Mr.
I can tell you that part of our, our party deck is a hot tub. And so, I, I, we're, we're never leaving town. I mean, as long as we can be here, we want to be here and celebrate a centennial Tommyknocker season, um, you know, and, uh, and be here for the, the rest of the human existence. And so, you know, absolutely, we're not leaving town, and there's nothing that's a deal breaker for us. We're not going to pack up because we're a little salty about a decision on something. And we'll say, the party deck is part of the hot tub. So if we don't build the hot tub, we're not, at this time, we wouldn't build the party deck either. So, now that doesn't mean we won't build a party deck at some point. I mean, really, the strategic vision for Butte Silver Bow and for that stadium is to build a portion of a, of a party deck, or I guess the party deck is a bad way of saying, um, you know, a viewing.
VIP.
VIP.
A VIP deck.
Right.
Or a, or a viewing deck.
Right.
Um, but our, 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 our strategic vision to enhance Butte Silver Bow and this asset owned by Butte Silver Bow is to add portions year after year. In 10 years, I can, I can already see it and, and there are a lot of people who, they just, you know, they can't see the vision that we have for this. But, you know, I can already see it wrapped around the entire perimeter of the outfield fence. And what that means for Three Legend Stadium and for Butte Silver Bow and for the fans and for, you know, the Tommyknockers. So, you know, a part, you know, part of our agreements with who we have doing the construction and we had a huge breakthrough where we were going to do it in 2022 and now we were going to do it in 2021 is, uh, you know, is the hot tub.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. And, uh, just one more comment, Mr. Wagner. Again, appreciate you guys being here in town. Again, big Copper King fan. I mean, there's, um, in, in agreeance on, um, with, um, Chief Executive on that, yeah, that we do want to ramp this up for, uh, for it to have, you know, again, I'm going to be definitely selfish to the Legion program first because we, we've been around this. We've been through this before, we've lost teams, we brought them in. Um, so, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I remember that. It was, to me, losing the Copper Kings, it was terrible. Yeah, at that time, where that, where we at on that field, when we were, the Legion was kicked out of there, you know, life happens. Now, now we have a stadium for our Legion kids. Very important. With that being said, so now you guys are, yeah, we, it has to work for both, it has, both parties. That's what has to work. And I think it is, again, I'll, I'll be one of your biggest fans. I'm going to have you, I'll probably have to give you a ride home from your games. I can't wait, but it's really got to be a, a, a thing where I think it works for both people. So, um, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I stand corrected, that is not Mankin, uh, Commissioner Mankin's, that is Justin Fortune's district.
Right.
Uh, this, I got messed up there a little bit. You know, I'm not for one kicking the can down the road. I love the Tommyknockers, I love everything about it, but you made the comment that swayed my vote. No hot tub, no deck. I'll make a motion at this time, we die, deny communication 2021-194.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny, uh, communication number 2021-194. Anything on the question? Commissioner Shaw.
Nothing on the question, just a comment. Again, we are thrilled that you're here. I hope you understand that if it, if there's no deal breaker, I mean, we, we, it's either we do it or we don't do it and that's unfortunate. I really wish there was a way.
Just this year.
I wish, wish there was a way we could do part of it, you know, and not all of it, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, Commissioner, I mean, Director, well, Director Met, um, Wagner.
No, no, and, and, and you know, there's never going to be a scenario where we're packed up and leave town. I mean, I, I know that with the Copper Kings, there was some sort of behind-the-scenes politics that played into their departure and that certainly won't be the case with the Tommyknockers. You know, we're here to, to add to the, to the city, to the community, to youth baseball. And, you know, I believe wholeheartedly in doing things that benefit both the Legion program and us, like a concessions building, like a bathroom, just to address kind of why we couldn't build the party deck and the hot tub, or it has to be one or not any of it. It's per our agreement with the construction company and Mountain Hot Tub and different things like that, it would tire hands to not, to not build the hot, the hot tub section. So, it actually would be all built in one piece. So, it's two different sections, but it would all be built and constructed in one piece. And so, for, for us, so I just want to express my heart. It wasn't like I'm playing hardball here or being a, a jerk. It's, it, part of our agreement to build this is the hot tub. So, it was that part.
Baseball reference, actually softball.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
And one other comment, we.
So, that, I just wanted you to know that, though.
Okay.
So, that wasn't why it was like one or none. It, it's actually just kind of where we are with it. It's, it's kind of how, how it would have to happen.
So, on the motion, we need to also add place on file. And I would amend my second.
So, the motion is to deny and place on file.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else on the question? Could commissioners please vote? So, remember, the motion is to deny, so that would be a, a yes vote. And anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Oh, ten, ten, or nine yay, one nay.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay, moving on, um, second, communication number 23, um, number 23, communication number 2021-196. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners approval for Chief Executives to sign the appointment request for Jeffy Lentz to be Water Commission for Fish Creek and its tributaries. Mr. Lentz rate for this work is $95 per day through the irrigation season of 2021. Commissioner Thatcher.
It was me.
Oh, was that you?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you did. I thought, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Commissioner. I broke down the wrong one. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. We're going from, uh, hot tubs to water law. Um, so, um, forgive me, I, I'm assuming we, we approved this last year and when I was going through it, um, I just had some questions about the, um, the petition of appointment that's attached to the, the communication. And, um, you know, I guess, and maybe this is a good question for the county attorney or, or more, or Director Neary, but, um, it says that we're paying, it says we have to pay, we're the name of the user on the, I guess, can someone explain this to me?
Commissioner Fredrickson, Director Neary.
I'm sure I'm going to have some follow-up questions.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. For the record, I'm Mark Neary, Public Works Director. Dean Hanson, The Hanson Ranch in Whitehall, they're the majority water rights owner on Fish Creek. They have 15 CFS and we have five. So, when irrigation starts, he needs his 15 CFS. And we need our five to fill Basin Creek. Well, there's some, could be some water thieves in between where it goes into Basin Creek and Dean Hanson's property. So, this, and it's Jerry Lentz, not Jeffy, but this, um, this, it, it was misspelled.
Yeah, I know.
So, that, it's only when water starts to get scarce that Mr. Lentz checks to make sure that people aren't stealing the water. And it's, it's good for Dean Hanson, but it's also good for us because he gets his 15 CFS. So, if people are stealing it, he still gets his 15 and then we'd have to shut ours off. And I don't think we've had many issues since, uh, Director Schultz and Dean Hanson kind of came up with this. And the, we have our own water rights attorneys, um, Franz and Driscoll out of Helena. And this is the whole legal thing that we have to go through and then they appoint it. But they just have to get, uh, Chief Executive Gallagher's signature on this agreement.
Thank you, Director Neary. Commissioner, follow up?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Director Neary. That's a great explanation. Um, so I guess is, does Dean Hanson have to pay anything for his? No. And Jefferson County, it says in here, has 15% and they don't have to pay anything either?
Commissioner Fredrickson, Director Neary.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Fredrickson, you're right. He does not have to pay. And I think it was just an agreement that they came between because he was majority water rights and it was beneficial for us to pay this money so we didn't have to shut off our water to Basin Creek. Because I, it, it does happen, water is valuable to everybody and people are just throwing in headgates and stuff and ta- and taking the water. So, it was beneficial, more beneficial for us than it was Mr. Hanson.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Neary.
No other questions?
Uh, any other questions, commissioners?
Okay.
Seeing none? Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I will, uh, I'll move to concurrent place on file, communication number 2021-196.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concurrent place on file, communication number 2021-196. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Doesn't look like, Michelle, it looks like you still. And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten nay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to Section 3, Communications to be read, read and acted upon. Uh, communication, number one, communication number 2021-186. JP Gallagher, Chief Executive, requesting Council Commissioners review and consideration to refund the local businesses licenses fees to businesses that are in good standing, meaning they have paid in full for this year and the businesses will come to the courthouse to, or use online application form to apply for the refund. And so, um, as you, you recall, on, um, two weeks ago, I, I said that it was my intent to bring forward to you, um, a process to refund, um, license fees. We had many casino and bar owners asking for that refund and, and it was kind of the consensus of this body that it wasn't fair just to, to refund those licenses for, for the casinos and bars. Um, working with Director Gleason about how we could possibly refund the, these funds back. Um, Director Gleason has done a fantastic job of, of really protecting our COVID funds and putting the money into reserves. Um, so, the way this process would work is that we would refund out of the general budget, but it would be backfilled with the money that has been put in the reserves from the COVID money that is already there. We do not have to wait for the ARPA funds to come in to cover this cost. Again, the, the process really is just, the business comes and says, we want to have our, our business license refund for the year 2021. Um, they must have had their, their, um, paid and in, in good standing for this year. We would like to get these applications out and we would be ready to do this by, um, 9:00 tomorrow morning, have it online. We are asking that they have their applications in by May 15th and we would have the refunds sent out by June 15th. I worked with Da'nette and with, uh, Lori Baker, um, today on this process and Jason helped us, uh, create a, a form to, to be ready for the businesses. So, that's, uh, that's kind of the, the whole scenario. So, um, if commissioners have any questions, Commissioner Thatcher.
Uh, just, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, just a quick question, how much total dollar is that?
So, um, we've anticipated that the total dollar would be somewhere in the range of $150,000. We don't anticipate that all businesses will come forward to ask for that. Um, but we, we have the, the money available to do that and it would not impact the, the local taxpayer. You know, we, we'd be able to, to use the COVID money to backfill and, when we pull this out of the general fund.
Okay, and then my next question is, at our last meeting, um, with the bar, um, folks, I had asked Lori the question about what happens when they pay late? And so, it, did people pay late this year? And if so, do they get their late fees returned as well or is, how does that work?
You know, on the late fees, we, we did not have that built into this, but if they paid late, you know, that, it's their responsibility to this. This is a benefit to the, to the business owners. Um, if they did pay late and they're, and they have it and they're good, in good standing, they will get their, their fees refunded.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So, the, the money is currently right now, do we have the money? It's in another COVID fund?
Commissioner O'Neil, that, that came out of the CARES Act funding that we had and as I said, that, uh, Da'nette has done a, a really nice job of putting that in our reserves. So, um, a lot of our COVID expenditures that have gone on throughout the year have been paid out of, out of, uh, um, the, the general fund, but backfilled with the COVID money in our reserves. So, that, that way, that money has been protected. But again, this will not impact the, the taxpayers. It won't, you know, it wouldn't be a burden on them. It's going to come from the CARES Act funding backfilling out of the reserves. Follow up?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Um, so, not trying to make life difficult for this, I, I definitely agree that we give health of businesses out. Um, just if, is that, that $150,000, um, given to the businesses that are $35, that the ones that are 400, because it's just such a wide range of fees that are going to be given back. Um, then with the fact, I, I do agree with you that not every business is going to come forward to get them. So, it'll be a little bit of a, is there another, not trying to discourage your plan, but just another way of getting this money out in a better spot. Um, as I said, I have no, no, no idea. I'm just bringing it to you as a question. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil, you know, I, we, we thought about that. You know, we, we're not able with this money to do tax relief to the local taxpayers. Um, this is one way that we could give back to the, to the businesses. We know that not every business was impacted the same way and that's why we're asking for an application of the businesses that feel like they've been most impacted. And, and in some aspect, it's, it's a small give with some of these businesses. Um, but it was one that really was, came forward kind of passionately by the casinos and the bars and, and discussed pretty at length about, you know, you'd love, we'd love to do this, but it's not fair to all businesses. So, this gives an opportunity for all businesses to do that. I think that, um, in the spirit of the CARES Act, this fits within the ability for us to do this, to give back to our community. It's nothing that, um, because one of the, the, the drawbacks to anything that we do with this money is the possibility of 20 years from now, we get audited on this money. I mean, the Treasury Department has said, because of the amount of money that's going to go on, we have to be prepared to answer to this money up to 20 years down the road. So, that's, Da'nette and her department has been very, um, very prudent about the way we spend this money. And so, I, I can, you know, I, I'll let, uh, Director Gleason speak for herself on this, but, um, as we all know in here, she understands the way we can spend and, and she is very, um, she, she understands what we can do better than anybody else here and I trust her opinion. And, and I brought this to her and then say, how do we make this work? And she found a way to make this work. And so, I, I applaud her and her department for doing this for us. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. On average, so, I mean, these people are going to come forward. How many, how many businesses are we talking about? And then on average, what do we think each business is going to be returned?
Well, it, it all depends on the business licenses that they actually, um, have paid to us. That's, that's what they're due if they come forward and we're not going to reject anybody. As I said, I, I don't anticipate and I'm not going to speak towards any business name, but, um, that I, I anticipate there's going to be businesses that are not going to come forward to apply for this. So, my anticipation, if, we would probably max out at $100,000 at, if I was to anticipate this. But, um, you know, I think that it's just, I think the community saw this as well-received. Um, and, um, you know, I, I feel good about being able to do this for our community. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'll make a motion at this time that we approve communication 2021-186 and place on file.
We have a motion, anything? Okay, we have a motion and a second, anything on the question? I'm sorry, thank you. Thank, Commissioner Shea.
I'm sorry, I tried to get my question in before Commissioner Fisher made a motion. Um, this is a really kind of a small question, but, because I know this has gotten a lot of press. Will we be doing any proactive outreach to the businesses to, to let them know of the, of, of the program?
That, that's a good question. I think that we, we need to probably address that first thing in the morning to, to maybe even send a letter out because we're going to make a May 14 deadline. If we, if we draft a letter out of the Chief Executive's office to, to be sent out, I think we could do that to send every one of the, uh, addresses that have, have had a license. So, that's a great idea and I appreciate that. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, thank you for explaining the difference between CARES Act money and our, our, you know, the.
ARPA money.
ARPA money. Uh, they're different buckets, they, they have different requirements, uh, they're designed for different things and that really helped me to get over a hump on this, to be honest. But I guess the only other question I have is, our Treasurer's Department, what kind of impact or what kind of a, are, are we putting an undue strain on them for this timeline that we have to deal with, especially the Treasurer's Office? So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. I'll, I'll let Donette speak for us here. Director Gleason.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Shaw, for the record, Donette Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director. Lori Patrick, the Treasurer, had other commitments tonight, so she couldn't be here to answer some of these questions. But as Chief Executive Gallagher stated, we had been working on this over the past few days and discussing processes. And it is a very time crunch for her right now. That department works a lot doing taxes, and our department's working a lot on budgets. But we've agreed to work together to find a way to achieve it and get the payments back out to the businesses. So we'll be working together between our staffs to make it happen.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Chief, Chief Executive Gallagher. My other question is, what other uses would this money be used for if we, we decided not to refund it? What are the other options, are there, that would be beneficial for the community?
Commissioner Sorge, you know, there's many things that that could fall into. That's a hard, that's a hard question to answer. It has to fall within what the state guidelines were within COVID. And so, we, we were able to achieve, to be able to, to reserve those funds based on the use that we had with COVID, with the expenditures towards COVID. And maybe I could have Donette stand, or Director Gleason, talk about that a little bit.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Sorge. So, as Chief Executive Gallagher stated, on the CARES Act money was very different than the guidelines and the requirements that we're seeing with ARPA. So CARES Act, we had to actually submit reimbursement to the state of Montana to receive those funds instead of being a direct allocation from the Treasury to the state, to us. And the basis for receiving CARES Act funding was public safety. So it was the please fire public health, anybody that was dedicated, direct dedication to COVID. So, we spoke about Chester tonight. Chester was dedicated to COVID for us. Some of other employees, IT department, those, anybody, we all tracked our time. And so we sought reimbursement for those funds. And then once those funds were eligible for reimbursement, then that, and we covered those costs. So, alluding to the fact that we had reserve funds, we didn't spend, we didn't have to spend a lot of that money for overtime, for example, in the fire department when they were covering a shift for somebody that had to be quarantined for COVID. So those funds became available. So that allowed additional funding and reserves in our general fund. So cash available in our general fund to be able to turn around and then refund these payments that we've already received. So, funding, it's gonna be a variety of things, used for a variety of things. You're gonna see it come through in the budget process. And it'll also be discussion, future discussion in the committee that Chief Execu, Executive Gallagher had mentioned earlier that he's established. But this is just one element. There's a lot of elements related to economic development that the funds can be used for. That being one of them, business and economic development. And that's the criteria that our department placed these funds under. So we will be looking at every single expenditure we make and seeing how they fit in the audit requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Gleason. Commissioner Callahan.
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. I was just wondering, is this gonna be public knowledge who requests a refund?
Commissioner Callahan, Director Gleason.
Hi, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Callahan, everything we do at Butte Silver Bow that runs through our department is public. There's nothing that's not. So if somebody applies for a refund, and they request the Montana standard or another entity requests a list of all those individuals that are gonna receive checks, you're gonna see them on the check runs, it's all public record.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other question? Okay, commissioners, please vote. And the motion is to concur and place on file. And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, one nay.
Nine yay, one nay, motion passes. Moving on to, let's see where we had, kind of, Section Four, Ordinances and Resolutions for Second Reading. Number one, Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-four, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-four. Clerk, could you read the caption?
An ordinance amending Title Fifteen of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Buildings and Construction, amending Chapter fifteen point zero-five, entitled Adoption of International Energy Conservation Code, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I've moved to place Council Bill number twenty-one, twenty-two-one-dash-o-four, and Ordinance number twenty-two-one-o-four on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication, Council Bill number twenty-two-one, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-o-four on second reading. Anything on the question? Commissioners, please vote. Would anyone like to change their vote? Commissioner Shay, I think it's still not recording for you, there you go. And clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten nay, oh, ten yay, zero nay. Phew, it's getting to be a long night already. Section Five, Ordinances and Resolutions for File Reading. Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two. Clerk, could you please read the caption?
An ordinance amending Chapter two point one-six of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, entitled Fire Department, specifically amending sections two point one-six point zero-three-zero, two point one-six point zero-six-zero, two point one-six point three-two-zero, two point one-six point three-two-one, two point one-six point three-two-seven, two point one-six three-six-zero, two point one-six point three-eight-zero, two point one-six point three-nine-zero, two point one-six point three-nine-one, two point one-six point four-two-zero, and deleting section two point one-six point three-nine-five and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two and Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-two on final reading. Anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. This is a very important thing. I served on the Personnel Committee for the last few years. And if anyone remembers, I think Michelle may have been on it, and John. We had a couple of incidences where the, the fire chief really didn't have a seat at the table, and the fire department didn't have a seat at the table. And anybody don't understand, these people that apply for firemen gotta go to the consortium, they gotta go through probationary. It, it's just a real long process. So, this is really a lot of work that was well done by the county attorney's office, Chief Doherty, and I see Battalion Chief Worley out there. This is a great thing to happen, and I know it was a complex thing. But in my mind, this is gonna eliminate a lot of the problems we had when we were hiring firemen or promoting firemen. So I'm all in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any other comment? Okay, could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Congratulations, guys. Moving on to Resolution number twenty-two-one-dash-one-two. Clerk, please read the caption.
I think we skipped one.
Did I skip? Oh, I goofed, my fault. God, I'm jumping ahead, my fault. Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-three, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-three. Clerk, could you please read the caption?
An ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero-six-zero point zero-three-zero of Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, which section adopted the zoning map of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning approximately eighteen point five acres from R-one-dash-S, one family district suburban residence to C-dash-T, community commercial, commonly located east of Harrison Avenue and north of Five Mile Road, located in the McQueenie subdivision, Section Five, Township Two North, Range Seven West, of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-o-three, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-o-three, on final reading and passed, having been fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Council Bill number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-three, Ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-three on final reading. Anything on the question? Commissioners, please vote. And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Now let's move on to Resolution number twenty-two-one-dash-one-two. Clerk, please read the caption.
A resolution accepting the transfer of a certain parcel of real property for the benefit of the public by contributing to the development of the Silver Bow Creek Greenway to allow access, development of, oh, access features for passive recreation activities and preserving and protecting the remedial and restoration investments within the Greenway corridor and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Resolution number twenty-two-one-dash-twelve on final reading and passed, having been deemed-
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Resolution number twenty-two-one on final reading. Anything on the question? Commissioners, could you please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to any public comment on any public matter not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to comment on any item that was not on the agenda tonight?
We have a letter.
We have a letter. Could we please read the letter into the record?
This is an email from Eldon Beal. Chief Executive Gallagher, Madam Chair Cindy Shaw, Council of Commissioners. My public input for tonight's meeting is partly some of the same issues that have been in front of the Council of Commissioners before, and still there is no resolve. Today around eleven AM, a group of people all came into the park. I witnessed again, this male urinated on a pine tree and confronted him, and I confronted him, when he admitted doing, he was with a group from Montana Mental Health, which, the went to a couple picnic tables. I talked with the daytime programs, and she said, call the police, and we did. Another female came to the park, and she recommended that the officer, Officer Rao, write him a warning or ticket to the male that was in question. We all talked and understood that these things can happen with mentally ill or socially challenged people. The bigger problem is that my neighbor's young child was looking out the window and told her father that there was a guy in the park with his man thing out. The, I know that some of the commissioners agreed that a portable toilet and chained down would be beneficial. I think it is something that should be explored more effectively and efficiently because it is all starting over again and will when the chief executive won't do anything in his administration. Eldon Beal, three fifteen South Dakota Street, Butte, Montana, five-nine-seven-zero-one.
Thank you. Any other public comment or letters to be read in? All right, no, no phone calls? Okay. All right, moving on to calendar and other meeting events. Please take note of the dates and times of any of the future meetings. And I will take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. That, that I won't do anything anyhow.